To the Republic, which stands.
In this vote with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Walker, I'd like to make one announcement about the letters that you signed that would then begin the process of.
I apologize, Mayor Walker, but we do need the rule.
Ms. Thomas.
Dr. Bellamy, Ms. Hill.
Here.
Ms. Walker.
Present.
Mr. Signer.
Here.
Ms. Galvin.
Here. So, sorry. So, Mayor Walker, I'd like to just acknowledge the fact that by your signature, you've endorsed for the council proceeding with an application to the Dominion Energy to use the Ivy landfill as a utility-scale solar power installation. The landfill is open land, it can't be built on, it's not useful for anything else, but to have solar arrays on that landfill is a great way to generate revenue through the electrical grid. So if we make the application, we at least are in the running to get a permit to begin doing that with the Rivana Water, excuse me, the Rivana Solid Waste Authority. And that, at that point, once we get the application, we can then determine how much that might redound back to the ratepayers in terms of savings.
That is correct. I'll be signing off on it.
Oh, you will be. Okay, thank you. And Mayor Walker, I do have a statement to make, if I may, and I'd like to hand it out to everybody that is here. And I was hoping that Councilor Bellamy would be here as well, but he is not, and at some point, he will join us. But I'd just like to make a statement of principles on behalf of the councilors Bellamy, Galvin, Hill, and Signer concerning city councils functioning within council chambers. Number one, treat each other with mutual respect. Number two, do not condone outbursts and interruptions by the public as they hamper thoughtful deliberation and decision-making when conducting the people's business. Three, disallow an abusive environment consisting of verbal abuse, threats, and personal attacks as it weakens mutual respect and trust between councilors and between the city council, city staff, and the public. Four, follow the rules that were adopted by the city council in February 2018 and support the mayor in the mayor's efforts to conduct council meetings in accordance with these rules. Failure to meet these principles will render this duly-elected representative body incapable of effectively governing from the dais. It's just a statement of principles that I heard my colleagues say to me, and I compiled them. It's not a resolution, it's just a statement.
Thank you, Councilor Galvin.
Any other announcements?
Good evening, everyone. My apologies for my tiredness, it's the first day of class, and so it is a time at Virginia State as well as getting back here. But in any event, I had the opportunity to speak to Council Signer, as well as have some conversation with Councilor Galvin on Saturday, and I've been speaking to Mayor Walker over the weekend, and I saw Vice Mayor Hill this past weekend. I wanted to say also, I really appreciate Ms. Galvin for working on this proclamation. And just me personally, as one individual, I wanted to share my support for my colleagues on council. I think that it's important to note that while we may have disagreements in terms of policy, I genuinely don't believe that any of you are quote-unquote racist. I've worked with all of you on different capacities and different specific policy measures, specifically Councilor Galvin, Councilor Signer, and Ms. Hill, Vice Mayor Hill. So for the things in which you all had to endure a couple weeks ago, just me personally, I want to say it's not cool, and I hope that we, as a community, can make sure that while we're speaking, no matter what the topic is, as passionate as it may be, it's important for us to be able to be respectful of each other, because at the end of the day, we're all here just trying to make the city better. We're not always going to agree, but that doesn't mean that any of us should just speak to each other in a way in which is just completely disrespectful and out of line. And I'm also, just as one individual, I wish I would've said something last Monday, and I know it was me who said at the retreat, in the spirit of collegiality, that, you know, we should have each other's back, and there's certain things we shouldn't tolerate, and I let y'all down. So for that, you know, I apologize. I should've definitely intervened, and I just hope that the community as a whole can take a cue from that, that, again, we don't, we're not supposed to agree on everything. We're five different individuals with five different personalities, but that doesn't mean that anyone needs to be subjected to certain things, and I appreciate all of you for when the attacks come to myself, and I know from Mayor Walker, I can't speak from Mayor Walker, but when we get things that are said, kind of like here, we get them to our house and to our families, and we're subjected to them on a regular basis. It doesn't make one right, doesn't make one wrong. I know you guys always say, you know, you all are sorry that we have to be subjected to that stuff, and I appreciate that support, and I hope you all know that me, I'm willing to give you guys the same support today, tomorrow, moving forward, and we're one team. Teammates don't always agree, but we are a team, so I hope we all can move forward and work together moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. Bellamy.
Are there any other announcements?
I have a statement also, Mr. Mayor Walker. This will be along the same theme, and I wanted to begin just by thanking Dr. Bellamy for that very appreciated statement, and we did talk, and it really was, it's just very appreciated. Just a couple words. So I wanted to start by saying, I wasn't sure I'd be able to come tonight, whether out of protest at the breakdowns that are happening, or just my continuing revulsion of being called one of the most vile things I can ever remember in these chambers. These meetings have become like a coliseum where the levels of abuse directed at councilors and staff and citizens has become like sport sometimes. In remaining in the meetings when our own rules have been abandoned, I've been worried about becoming complicit in a spectacle that's effectively telling kids and parents and members of minority communities, whether faith-based or other, that you are not psychologically safe inside these chambers. And we have all experienced too much abuse in this community in the last years. I deplore the racist and the violent and the threatening messages that have been directed toward my colleagues and their families, what Wes was just talking about. I've only seen some of it, and it's awful and horrible. And the last meeting was awful, too, and it's not about me or any other single one of the other councilors, about a constituent, it's about the message that these meetings are sending and about the business that we do for the public here. We wouldn't allow this in a school board meeting, or a PTO meeting, a student council meeting, or in Congress. Why are we then allowing it in Charlottesville City Council? My wife and I can't let our four-year-old twins watch these meetings, and I've heard the same from too many other parents. We are just ordinary humans trying to do our best in a time of lot of motion. There was a dispute about an allocation last time, we had, we wanted to debate about it, but the response from the floor before the slur that was uttered was, there was somebody calling "shut up, Signer" from right in the back there, interrupting and trying to shut down debate and not allowing us to do our jobs up here. We did receive a written apology from the woman who said the Hitler's Best Friends thing, which I want to acknowledge, but because that wasn't public, it doesn't address what is happening in public. It ma-- excuse me. Excuse me. Please wait until you have your turn, okay? I'll leave this up to the mayor, but we have done our best work on equity, I believe, not by shouting at each other, but by listening and working hard. We made significant investments in public housing, for instance, by working together. When I supported Mayor Walker and Councilor Bellamy on the decision regarding Jefferson's birthday, I changed my mind during that meeting after listening and hearing you guys. And the fact is that under our rules, only the mayor can act to bring these meetings under control and is required by the rules to do so. We've had some very hard emails among the last week about this topic, won't go into it here, I will just say that I stand firm and respectfully requesting that the mayor, as the officer in charge of the meeting, enforce the rules that we have unanimously affirmed three times this council term. I know from personal experience that this is a hard job, but that it is easier with the support of colleagues, so I'm glad that this council is unified in supporting the mayor in doing what she can to bring these meetings under control. Thank you for hearing me.
And I don't have much of a response, but I will say that this, making the decisions, because if you go back and look at meetings prior to my term, and especially after August 2017, those meetings were as hectic and as disrupted, and it did not go well. If you go read an article about the first meeting afterwards, there were three people arrested, charged with disorderly conduct, obstruction of justice, and I believe that we haven't done enough healing in this community where we won't have only those two options, escorting people out of the room in handcuffs, or having meetings that are as contentious. And it's unfortunate that that is our only two options. And so for me, it has been hard to make the decision to do what was formally done and have people, and especially when a lot of the hurt and pain is associated with the criminal justice system, our police office, to have that tension occur twice a month when we are still working as a city with how this work is done. There is not an easy answer. I've had, I have not had this discussion with any, you know, we had an email that was between Councilor Signer and ourselves, the other councilors were copied, I did not have a conversation with Councilor Galvin or Councilor Hill since the last meeting. All the other meetings where this request has been made have been public, have been public meetings, but those are the thoughts that I'm weighing. I received an email where this is somehow advancing my agenda to allow the disruption and chaotic situation in council meetings. It actually doesn't advance any agenda of mine, if you all have paid attention to the work that I do, and it also has given this council, and I'm sure individuals running for council, a reason to say why my term as mayor hasn't been very successful. So it would be easy if I was only concerned with myself and those messages that are being passed around among council members and in the community, for me to make the decision to, that would affect citizens in the community, but I have taken that heat, and it is still a decision that I am weighing and trying to figure out.
I'll say, I appreciate you stating that, Mayor Walker, and I, I mean, we had this talk this morning, you're in an incredibly tough position, as many of us are. Nobody wants to see, Council Signer and I talked about this this afternoon, nobody wants to see people drug away in handcuffs. Nobody, none of us up here want to see people arrested at a city council meeting. That's not the goal in any shape, form, or fashion. I think we all can agree with that, but I do think, and I think my personal opinion is all five of us also agree that when we're up here, there has to be a certain level of respect in which everybody shows each other. So we can agree to disagree on certain things, we can agree to be disagreeable on certain things, but that doesn't mean that we have to disrespect each other up here at all. I'm often the first one when people say different things that I don't like to Mayor Walker. I often interject, because I definitely don't like people stating certain things to her. And I think all of my colleagues, we all want the same level of respect from myself and others, we just all want to be able to be on the same page and not feel blatantly disrespected over policy measures, because at the end of the day, we're still people. So we didn't, some people say, like, we sign up for this, we didn't sign up for this, per se. Nobody signs up to be subjected to certain levels of abuse. So we have to figure out a way to be, again, if we disagree on policy issues, then let's disagree in ways in which we still don't act as if we hate each other, because that doesn't, that doesn't get any of us anywhere. And I think that today is a point that we can all move forward. It's a chapter in the book, and we're going to turn the page, and I'm foreseeing things are going to be cool, and everybody, if we do disagree, it's going to be all right, and we're going to move forward. Today's going to be the day of a start of something new, so I'm looking forward to it.
Are there any other announcements?
We're going to have a great meeting, and a short meeting.
All right.
I'm claiming it.
If we don't have any proclamations, is there anyone here who would like to speak on a topic on the consent agenda?
Mayor Walker, I'm sorry, don't beat me up. While we don't have proclamations, I got one announcement. Can I have my announcement? Thank you. In light of the last meeting that we had, I do think it's important, I want to show some love to everyone who participated in the Unity Day events throughout the month. We've had a phenomenal month, in two months, three months, of outstanding Unity Day events. Last night, I also want to give some kudos to Ms. Hudson. We had Go-Go in the City and Reclaiming Our City, it was a phenomenal event at Thompson Park. My team lost in the championship, so I'm a little mad about that, but, but, all right, Ms. Hudson, all right, don't rub it in. But, you know, I will say that the Go-Go event was phenomenal, and even after, I think we can announce it now, even after, you know, we had the debate the last meeting, the artist Wale is coming Tuesday, October 8th, it's going to be a free concert at the Sprint Pavilion. So I had some conversations with Red Light Management today about ticket distribution and whatnot, so it's going to be a great event for the city, and everybody wins. So thanks to everybody who put together, Mr. Willa and Ms. Green and everyone else who put together Unity Seaville, Ms. Turner, can we give them all a round of applause? Thank you all for your hard work, and we all win.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor Walker.
Mr. Hall.
I'm John Edward Hall, Frye Springs. I would like to speak on 1B, C, D, and G. Now, it's up to you, Mayor Walker.
All right, your time is, so you have three minutes.
Starting with 1B. I wish city councils to consider changes to make OAR more efficient in beating, treating all substance abuse. First of all, OAR is a misnomer in that the "O" in the title puts the court in the frame of mind that the defendant accused before trial of drug abuse is guilty. Thus, we need to change OAR, offender, to DAR, defender, or defendant, aid and restoration. OAR is not properly equipped in staffing to facilitate justice. There is a fine opportunity presented here to have city councils to direct OAR to hire more, one or more paralegals, psychologists and psychiatrists, to act hand-in-hand in interviews with accused traffickers, police officers, alcoholics, or drug abusers to establish proof of guilt or innocence, and brief, and have a brief written by a paralegal, perhaps, if that's all we can afford, put in the hands of a court-appointed pro bono lawyer. The paralegals can prepare briefs to facilitate justice. This two-tiered justice system we now have, one for the wealthy, even UVA students drunk in public who hire lawyers that argue down CPD, or UVA police officer who often can show videos to prove guilt beyond a shadow of doubt, the accused persons are clearly guilty, are found innocent and told, "You are free to go." Case in point, William Barclay in Charlottesville District Court this morning ruling for two drunk UVA students, clearly drunk and presented as such, taken away in squad car by a UVA police officer, on video cam, CPU monitor. Officer failed to be bold and did not know measures to be thorough in determining their guilt. Because skilled lawyers were hired by student families or students themselves, they were set free. Consider what would have happened if they were poor, not well-served by a court-appointed lawyer, or chose to argue against a skilled prosecutor, per se. They would be jailed, convicted as felons, their life ruined by a cold, cold court. Justice in America is a two-tier illusion, as Mayor Walker would say. I say law gives us burden by, pack dockets all suffer from delusion. True reform and restoration for all accused must be at hand now.
Thank you.
We can do better as one people, Charlottesville and America.
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on a consent agenda item?
I would.
No. Yeah. Anyone else?
I told you that I was.
Anyone else? Okay. Ms. Thomas, could you read the consent agenda, please?
1A, minutes, June 17 special meeting, June 17 regular meeting, July 1st special meeting. B, appropriation, Charlottesville Albemarle Adult Drug Treatment Court, grant award $240,000, first of two readings. C, appropriation, FY 2019 to 2020, Virginia Department of Transportation, revenue sharing program, multimodal improvements, and local match transfer, $826,436, first of two readings. D, appropriation, VDOT Revenue Share Program for West Main Streetscape Improvements Phase One, additional award, $163,478, first of two readings. E, appropriation, Bama Works Fund Fire Safety Trailer Grant, $3,500, first of two readings. F, appropriation, Virginia Juvenile Community Crime Control Act Grant, $452,704, second of two readings. G, appropriation, VDOT Primary Extension Paving Project Funds, $633,442, second of two readings. H, appropriation, Thomas Jefferson Area Crisis Intervention Team Training Grant, $20,708, second of two readings. I, appropriation, Moving From Foster Care to Adulthood Rental Assistance Grant, $300,000, second of two readings. J, resolution, WTJU sponsor request, city sponsorship of the Black Business Expo on Saturday, September 14th, 2019, $2,000, first of one reading. K, ordinance, amending Charlottesville City Code Section 26-29 for leaf collection, first of two readings. L, ordinance, amending and reenacting City Code Chapter 11, Article 4, Director of Finance, second of two readings.
Okay. Is there anyone, after hearing the consent agenda items, is there anyone who would like to speak?
Okay. I just have two comments. Just want to make sure that individuals, the citizens know that K, leaf collection, there will no longer be bags for those who may not have read it, and that you will rake your leaves to the curb, and the vacuum trucks will come and pick them up, so just don't want anyone to be caught off guard with that. And then, just for council, I have the same just comment I had about the WTJU sponsor request. Just when we get these requests that seem like they are for advertising dollars, or, you know, something like that, I would just like for them to be, you know, for us to get the proposal instead of just a request, or what the dollar amount is going for. So I had said something similar for the welcome, the welcoming week allocation last council meeting. Those are my only two comments.
Appreciate your consistency in that regard, Mayor Walker. I think for WTJU, I don't see the rep here, but in fact, you're right to a certain extent, those dollars are used for marketing for the Black Business Expo. There's a great deal of marketing that goes into it, so they don't get the same kind of nonprofit rates on local media because they're not under one nonprofit entity, which is why they're requesting those funds. And just for FYI, for anybody, please be sure to come out. Minority Business Week is the 5th, September 5th through the 12, September 14th through the 20th. There we go. Ms. Copeland knows.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? All right, please vote. All right, that carries five to zero, and Councilor Hill will make some board appointment announcements.
I move that the following are appointed to our boards and commissions. To the Building Code Board of Appeals, Diane Caton, Charles Lewis, Kip White. To the Community Development Block Grant Task Force for the Belmont Neighborhood, Olivia Gebe. Historic Resources Committee, Sally Duncan, Deirdre Smith, Jordy Jaeger. To the JHON Board of Directors, Lucas Ames, Christine Effort, and Raymond Heron. To the Minority Business Commission, Andrea Copeland-Wissette, Anthony LaCount, Mark Menefee, Kay Monroe, and Tessa Thompson. To the Personnel Appeals Board, Robert Woodside. To the Place Design Task Force, Navari Bartz and Cliff Fox. To the Region 10 Community Services Board, Dawn Pryor. To the Retirement Commission, the employee-at-large Scott Hendricks. To the Sister City Commission, Benson To the Sister City Commission, Benson, Ben Cesson Rep, Emily Martin. To the Social Services Advisory Board, Janet Morrow. And to the Tree Commission, Anson Parker representing the Fifeville Neighborhood.
Thank you. All right, next we have the city manager.
We need a second and vote on that.
Yes, we do need a second on that.
A second.
All right, please vote. That carries five to zero. Uh, and next we have the city manager responsible for community matters from the August 5th council meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. Uh, I had to have five items tonight. Uh, one comes from, uh, Brandon Morrisburger, who was, uh, asking or basically, uh, requesting for lights at the skate park. Apparently the skate park was built, uh, without the funding for lighting, but it does have the infrastructure in place for when we do get to that point. So that'll be funded in a future CIP. Uh, also to Ms. Gloria Beard, uh, as well as Mr. Gaines, often come before council to talk about the signalization at 10th and Page. Uh, currently, um, it does not meet our criteria for a signal light. Uh, it has to meet one of the nine traffic signal warrants. Uh, it didn't meet one of those. So that's something that we can continue to look at, uh, to try and find something that could calm the traffic, uh, based upon their request.
Is that 16th and Page or something?
10th and Page.
10th and Page.
Uh, next item, oh, she also asked about, uh, having, um, someone assist the seniors in terms of, uh, removing snow and different things like that in the community. Uh, at that meeting, Dr. Atkins, as well as members from the school board, were here and they said that they were gonna take care of that. Uh, but we'll stay in contact with the, with the, with Dr. Atkins to see if she can, uh, provide us with some additional information in terms of what they've been able to do, uh, for providing those services to the senior community. Also, she asked, uh, could there be some type of function, uh, for the senior citizens? So I said that I would, uh, work with our Parks and Recreation and try to provide them with a Friday evening out periodically. Uh, so we'll work on that. Uh, the other item moving forward is, uh, from, uh, Ms. Katrina Turner. Uh, she requested and wanted to know if there were any complaints against Chief Brackney. Uh, there were only two, uh, that were filed, and those two that were filed were from Ms. Katrina Turner. Um, but, uh, also too, uh, we're gonna be, uh, meeting, um, with Ms. Katrina Turner as well as the police chief, and we're gonna have a discussion about some of the matters that, uh, were brought up, uh, at the last meet. Uh, so we'll be scheduling that within the next couple of weeks. Though, um, also too, there was Adrian Dent, uh, one of the, uh, many students who provided us with a, um, a petition, uh, to increase our number of days over at Washington as well as Honesty Park. Uh, but, um, uh, as everyone is aware, most of our pools are staffed by, uh, our high school students as well as those that are in college. So as you can imagine, when August starts to taper off, uh, we start having less folks being able to be, uh, pool monitors as well as lifeguards at our pools. So what we, uh, looked at in terms of our Parks and Recreation Department uh, was to actually extend, um, uh, all pass types, uh, for Smith Aquatic and Fitness Center up until the end of September to provide folks with opportunity to still have a pool to go to, although it's indoors. And then, uh, the other item, I'd like to mention too, that we do keep the spray parks open two weeks after Labor Day. So they will be open and fully functioning. I just wanna address one more thing, uh, before I close out, is pertaining to, uh, a comment that was made, uh, at our last meeting, and it was, uh, how much money was put aside for the first year anniversary of the Summer of Hate? Um, and, uh, let the public know that, uh, you know, we did not exceed the $1 million mark. And with, and with that $1 million, uh, that was for, uh, transfers to our police department, uh, for providing, um, um, public safety for that day as well as public works to put, put up the equipment, uh, to close off roads and, uh, other things that they had to do, uh, on that day, on that, uh, anniversary. Uh, the other $100,000 that was transferred, uh, to Unity Days for the different events, and, uh, the other dollars was for mutual aid, uh, expenses, uh, with other, uh, with our other partners that we utilized for public safety, uh, during, uh, that time period. So with that said, uh, we still have a remaining balance of over $500-plus thousand in that account. So to say that it exceeded $1 million, uh, that was, uh, incorrect. Uh, we still have a balance of $572,000. So with that said, uh, I conclude my report, uh, for this meeting, Mayor.
Thank you.
May I ask a question, Dr. Richardson? Thank you very much for the thorough report. And I was just wondering back on the item two regarding 10th Street. Would, and there's a flashing yellow light at the intersection with Page.
Mm-hmm.
Could there be the possibility of at another intersection on 10th Street to put another flashing light in? Because that combined would slow the traffic overall. Cause I know how fast people pick up, especially as they go down the hill and then they gain momentum to go up. And I don't know whether that would be safe or possible or, but it's something that crossed my mind when, um, you were speaking.
Yeah, that's, uh, you know, that's something we could look at. Uh, as I always mentioned to all of council members, is nothing's impossible. Uh, we can always take a look at it and explore those other options.
Thank you.
All right.
So, maybe not for this meeting, uh, but I would like for us to have a further discussion on upcoming agenda in regards to what we plan to do with the $500,000 plus um, that's remaining in the budget from the, the anniversary from the Summer of Hate. Whether or not we plan to carry that money over to next year or could it possibly be allocated to something else? Yeah, you know, I wanna spend it, you know that.
And I like to save it.
Never mind, I guess I try that.
But, uh, I guess we can come back and have that conversation in terms of what we, uh, can do, uh, moving forward.
I take that as a no. I take that as a no.
Moving on.
No second. Yeah, all right.
So next we have, um, Community Matters. And first up, we have Blair Williamson.
Good evening. Thank you, everybody, for letting me have the opportunity to speak tonight. I'd like to address the topic of general safety of the downtown mall. There have been, uh, several newspaper articles in the Daily Progress and some general scuttlebutt about the possibility of closing the two vehicular cross streets on the downtown mall, 2nd and 4th Streets. Public safety is a major concern of not only the city of Charlottesville, but also all the downtown merchants, restaurateurs, mall vendors, businesses and restaurants. I have been told that there are more than 20 places that a car could enter the downtown mall. The two most obvious are the crossing streets. I would like to suggest that closing these streets would be the nuclear decision, kind of like building Trump's wall. Except when riots are occurring, I have never seen any driver be anything but cautious as they gingerly drive across the mall. It is imperative that everyone working, playing, eating, or shopping on the mall feel safe. We, the entire downtown community, need to come together to increase safety and at the same time, increase accessibility. The cross streets provide vital link, both visual and actual, to anyone looking for or using the downtown mall. These crossings allow for people with limited mobility to be dropped off on or, uh, dropped off or on immediately adjacent to the mall. Allows for deliveries, trash removal, buses, uh, moviegoers, et cetera. This is not only a discussion about safety, it's about accessibility and design. What if we had uplighting below the trees to create a beautiful nighttime light? What if we embraced technology and installed cameras that could be monitored from police headquarters since there is a shortage of officers? What if the crossings were a different texture or color so that there was a more visual cue to pedestrians that vehicular traffic could be coming? What if there were bollards that could recess in the mall for cleaning or fire access? So many options for improvement. In my opinion, in my business, magpie nets, about 60% of our traffic is from tourists. Most of them find the mall by accident, by driving across it. Then they hunt for parking. The signage guides, guiding people to the downtown mall is almost non-existent and the parking options are expensive and not easy to find. We also get a number of folks who come to town to look at the university. They hop on the free trolley and they get a tour and discover the downtown mall. We also have a fair number of older customers that come by taxi who get dropped off and cannot walk from the garage. If we as a community decide to go down the path of looking at ways to increase safety on the downtown mall, I'm hopeful that you will be thoughtful in your process and invite representatives from the downtown businesses as well as design professionals to the table to look at the big picture of accessibility. Thank you.
Thank you.
You might also look at those signs for 10th and Page that flash and show the speed limit of how much, they're pretty cheap.
Chris Farina.
To all City Council members and city staff, thanks for your work and your efforts. I'd like to discuss the recent development of West Main Street. Not to criticize past decisions, but to reflect on that development and use those reflections as an influence on future city decisions, not just on that street itself, but throughout the city. I'm not gonna pretend I'm any sort of expert on zoning and development issues. I'm just a citizen who's lived here for the last 40 years. Roughly 30 years ago, along with Reed Urschland, I made a documentary film about Charlottesville called West Main Street. Through that work, I had the true blessing of meeting and getting to know several wonderful citizens of our community, including three who grew up in the West Main Street neighborhoods. These include George Ferguson, Rebecca McGinnis, and Sonny Sampson. As many of you hopefully know, Mrs. McGinnis and Mr. Sampson were wonderful educators. Rebecca taught at the Jefferson School for around 45 years. And Mr. Ferguson, who literally was born on a house right on West Main Street, was a funeral director who also served as the head of the NAACP during school desegregation. His daughter was part of the first class to integrate our local schools. As members of the Charlottesville community, we are also lucky to have had them as strong and positive influences on our world. I bring them up to remind us that at this very moment, there might be a two-year-old playing at a neighborhood playground and a recently born baby crying for his mom, and each of these children could grow up to become positive future leaders of Charlottesville and beyond. And yet, when I think of West Main Street today, other than First Baptist Church and Mel's and perhaps one or two other stores, none of the recent development enhances the bordering neighborhoods and its people. In fact, I see these neighborhoods as cut off from the street. This so-called progress seems to be more for the people moving to this town and for those making money off of these changes. Plus, the jobs created are mainly service jobs, which continues the way-too-long history of the poor serving the rich in this town. This is not what I think we should be doing when the future development issues arise around Cherry Avenue, Preston Avenue, and Rosehill Drive. And we need to step back and make sure those decisions will positively affect the bordering neighborhoods. I think this past development points out a sort of hypocrisy of this town, which is supposedly a liberal town. And yet, the money invested to make more money seems to have the power more than our regular citizens do in making those decisions. To me, this connects with Mayor Walker's unmasking the illusion mission. I am not against free enterprise or economic progress, but I do feel that our democratically elected leaders need to take on the responsibility of protecting all of our citizens, especially those without the power of money, as we consider development issues that, that their lives are also enhanced by our future community. Thank you.
Megan Giltner.
Hi, my name is Megan Giltner, and I'm here representing Derriere Desois, a store located at 110 4th Street Northeast. Uh, in April of 2016, I found myself kind of an accidental entrepreneur. The business that I had worked for for two years went up for sale. And it was deeply important to me to keep that particular business in Charlottesville. Uh, I've been working in lingerie and bra fitting for about 10 years now. And I've cried with my customers, I've hugged them, I've rocked their babies, I've pushed their elderly mothers in wheelchairs and helped them learn to dress after a stroke. And, uh, in the last week or so, I've had a lot of customers coming in and saying, "We've been seeing this petition going around to close the mall crossing streets." And in 2016, when I needed to find a new home for my business because our existing lease at 105 East Main Street was due to expire in 30 days, I found a spot on 4th Street. And I was really, really excited. Customers could potentially park right across the street. Often they can't, but they think they can, and that's kind of important. And I feel like the cross streets do many important things. They keep people driving through the mall instead of driving around the mall. And my concern is that if they close, downtown will just be a little island that people just keep cruising right on past. If they don't immediately see somewhere to park or don't understand that there are two conveniently located garages, why would they stop? They're not going to see all the vibrant businesses that are serving tourists and locals alike. They're not going to be able to shop at the many different businesses that serve all sorts of different interests. And my concern is that if we close those crossings, we're really going to be closing down part of a community. And so I would ask that, as we look forward towards ways of improving this community, making it safer for everyone to enjoy, that we do so in a way that makes sense. Um, there are numbers of pedestrian malls around the country that find ways to have vehicular crossings operate in a safe and effective manner. And I think that there are a lot of ways that we could improve the existing crossings safely without having to do away with them. And I wanna echo what Ms. Williamson said, that there, there are improvements we can make. And I, I hope that should a petition come before council, should you decide to take up the mall crossing issue, that you look into all of the available options so that we can make the best decision to keep people flowing into the community instead of just going around it. Thank you.
Thank you. Nelson.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Nelson, I'm from Charlottesville, and I would like to speak to an ongoing problem with the police department. Few, uh, weeks back, I was, had an issue with a car trying to back into me. Yeah, car running over people in Charlottesville, imagine that. I was issued the ticket. And it was done without an ID, without even me saying who I was. Here's the documentation that was given to the courts. Two police officers. There are many lies in here that the officers said. I get to court. DA, "Oh, well, we're gonna give you 10 days in jail, but if you plead guilty, we'll waive those 10 days. And we're gonna put you on paper for two years. If you plead guilty, we'll let you go, but you gotta plead guilty." But because of the narrative that's on these, this piece of paper from two police officers, still was found guilty because of it. Of course, the public defender, he didn't wanna argue at all on my behalf. So now here I am, I got this big bill in the, in the courts that I can't afford to pay. And it's a shame that, you know, the general public has to put up with officers lying. Cause as a matter of fact, I went to the magistrate's office to try to file against the driver of the vehicle. I stood there and the sergeant and the officer actually lied to the magistrate. Now, if they're doing this to me, what are they doing to the black and brown community to keep them under and keep the paperwork on them? It's rather depressing. And matter of fact, you can't get an interview, you can't get an appointment with the chief of police. She doesn't wanna speak to anybody who wants to speak. And this is all from retaliation because the chief of police and police officers don't like the videos that are on YouTube about Charlottesville police. They don't like the police reports that have been filed against the police. The same words that they put here that stuck up in court, I use those same words in a police report against police officers and police staff. All of a sudden, oh no, that's, that's not the same narrative. So again, something needs to be done. Police Department needs to be held accountable. And that woman back there needs to answer for some of these things.
So I, I'd just like to say, um, excuse me, sir. If you don't, uh, just, just me personally, as, as one individual counselor, uh, I didn't include Chief Brackney earlier when we were, uh, talking about just the way in which we conduct ourselves and how we speak to individuals. Although you weren't yelling or whatnot, I do think it's important for us to respect our chief. We can have disagreements with her, we don't have to agree with everything she says. But when we make, when we make blatant state, blatant statements, like she doesn't wanna meet with anyone. My question when it comes to you is, have you asked her? my question, if it comes to you, is have you asked her for a meeting?
I've contacted her office four separate occasions. I've tried to make appointments through her office, and I've been denied each and every time.
So I appreciate you stating that. She's here. I think, just my personal, the way in which I know Chief Brackney, I've been with her on countless occasions in which she's, will talk to anybody. So I think one thing that may behoove us is if you're open to having a conversation with her tonight, maybe outside, if that's something that she's amicable to do.
I've talked to that man, two seats away from you, and I've asked for some sort of resolution twice now with him.
Well, I wasn't referring to Dr. Rusin.
That is correct. I'll move forward with that. We'll have a meeting set up with you, Mr. Nelson.
I mean, because, again, what is on this piece of paper, there are lies.
Okay.
There are body cam footage from the police.
So, we, that comment section is, period, is over. So thank you. Marta Keane.
Thank you, Dr. Rusin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Marta Keane, CEO at JABA. And it's really wonderful, Mayor Walker and counselors, to be back here again and share some updates with you. We're getting ready for the fall, and that means several different things that I wanted to let you and the residents of Charlottesville know about. The biggest one is our insurance counseling, especially the Part D, which is for the prescription plan. Last year, we saw twenty-two hundred people in the eight weeks, and we saved people 1.2 million dollars by helping them change their plans. And I'm not trying to sound like a Geico ad, but the point is, then, that means that people didn't have to make a choice between buying food and buying prescriptions. And so, we're very excited this year that, thanks to a foundation grant, we are opening an additional counseling space on Allied Street. So that that will help make it more convenient for Charlottesville residents and expand the numbers of people that we can serve. We've also got a lot more counselors that have gone through training, so we'll have over fifty counselors available to help with that. The ribbon cutting is August 29th at 10:00 a.m. If any of you are available, we'd love to have you join us. And at that space for the next six months, we'll be holding Getting Started in Medicare Counseling, which we do all year round, because we all turn sixty-five at different times. The Part D counseling for the eight weeks starting in mid-October. And we also have fifteen counselors that help with the Affordable Care Act counseling when that will be open. And last year, it was opened for a much shorter time with no dollar, federal dollars for marketing, and we were able to get a grant to help us let people know that Legal Aid Justice Center and JABA were offering that counseling for people. The next thing we've been working on is providing presentations on assistive technology that provides small ways to help people maintain their independence and age in the community. So just simple little adaptive devices that can make it easier for someone to stay independent. And we've presented that presentation at Timberlake, and that included Wallen Mills neighbors as well. And we also did it at the Mary Williams Community Center, and we have a date scheduled for Crescent Halls. And we'll probably be looking at some other places as well going forward. And then we also have a new counsel, options counselor, Kristin, who's been doing some outreach and trying to spread the word about home-delivered meals, which is a program that we have for people who can't get out to do the grocery shopping or who aren't able to prepare their own meals. And so this provides them with nutritious meals. So again, it's an opportunity to let people know about that. And I thank you for all of your support.
Thank you. Joan Fenton.
Good evening. I wanted to speak to you about the mall crossings. The downtown business community in the last few days became aware that there's a petition trying to close some of those crossings, and we've started our own petition drive. I believe we will have several thousand petitions within a week that will be signed, and more of that if need be. But the overwhelming response from our businesses, our customers, UPS drivers, postmen, anybody that uses the downtown mall frequently, is that those streets should remain open. When Second Street was opened, there was an agreement between the owner of that property and the city that that street would be opened in return for the movie theater being opened. And the city at that time said it would enhance the street, making it safer, do upgrades to the street to make the crossings better. When we lobbied for three years to get the Fourth Street opening, we asked repeatedly that Second Street crossings be upgraded and that Fourth Street also be upgraded to make the crossings better. That street was open temporarily for six months, so nothing was done at the time. When it was agreed that it would stay open and that it was effective and that it worked, we were told that something would be done. I understand that in 2005, the city did an extensive study on how to improve pedestrian safety downtown, and again, nothing's been done. So if the issue about those mall crossings is safety, then I think it's really the city that needs to take responsibility to upgrade. I sent all of you a photo of how Colonial Williamsburg has signage. But I think every city that has a pedestrian mall, it does not mean it's only pedestrians. There are cross streets. You have to have deliveries, you have to have trash pickup, you have to have the ability to drop off handicapped people. Parents want to be able to drop off their children where they can see where they're going and not drop them off on a side street. The visibility of the mall is a huge issue, that we, for years, had people tell us they couldn't find the mall, and they just kept driving. And when we got these two cross streets, people say to us all the time, "Oh, I was driving by, I saw you." When I was trying to get the petition signed in my store, one customer looked at me and said, "Oh, yeah, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for that crossing, because we were going to PVCC, and we drove across the mall, and we saw it and said, 'This looks great,' and we stopped off." And then the woman next to her says, "Well, yeah, well, I was just coming in, I noticed some parents picking up their kids on the Second Street crossing." So those are used in a variety of ways. And if the only issue is safety, then I think we need to look at Water Street, we need to look at Market Street, we need to look at the crossing at every street, because none of them are well-done. And it's an issue of better lighting, better crosswalks, how to do this best, and it's not simply a matter of, gee, if you close these two streets, things would be better. And the mall crossings are essential for the vitality of the downtown mall. You close it, and you really hurt downtown. Thank you.
But I don't think that the issue for a lot of people in terms of petition, I can't speak for everyone, but I think a big issue is the fact that Heather Iyer was killed on that street. It's not a matter of, like, just the safety, it's the fact that a lot of people don't like the fact that we now have an open street where people can drive through where someone lost their life. So it's the commemorative effect and kind of honoring that space in which not only someone lost their life, but hundreds of people were hurt, traumatized, and then left a really bad stain on our city. So I'm really interested in thinking about whether or not there's a compromise of sorts, and I know that's not for tonight, but I just wanted to state, I don't think it's all just about people wanting to close those two streets for safety reasons. It's a lot more to it than that.
Well, I think there's also issues of how do you commemorate? And what is it that you, as a community, do, and is that the best place to do it? And, you know, to just pick one spot and say, "This is where we want to do it, let's look at the whole city, let's look at the park where other actions took place, let's look at other parts of this."
But it's not.
I know she didn't die there, and Susan.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
No, and Susan's saying she doesn't want that to happen, so, you know.
But Susan, Susan is, it's the mother of a person who passed, but they're about the hundreds of people who were hurt.
Thank you.
Right, and I understand. So I'm saying there has to be a dialogue, and unfortunately, counsel often imposes something without discussion.
Mayor Walker, can I say one thing? We're currently working with a consultant now to look at the security along the downtown mall. And we'll be coming back with recommendations in the future pertaining to what the consultants have said pertaining to securing the downtown mall.
Karen Walker.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Karen Walker, and thank you for letting me speak this evening. I'm here to speak about the closing, potential closings of Second and Fourth Street. I own a flower shop at 115 Fourth Street, and I'm personally, with my business, opposed to closing the streets. And the reason being is that I've been on the mall for ten years, and four years ago, I moved from a non-crossing to a crossing street. And over the next two years, my business grew, it actually doubled. And I was able to hire two more people, and so I've been employing eight people. There's no question in my mind that closing Fourth Street traffic will cut off sales and reduce sales tax to the revenues, sales tax revenue to the city. Vehicular access to my business has made a big difference, both for customers and for deliveries. Older customers or customers with children do not have to make their way down three or four flights of crowded municipal parking to reach my store. They can park right outside. Proponents of this closure claim that is for safety reasons. Other than August 12th, in four years, I have not seen a single accident or injury due to cars crossing the mall. I am virtually seven, I am there virtually seven days a week, and I was in my shop preparing for a wedding during August 12th confrontation. If the city had not vacated its blockade at the top of Fourth Street, there wouldn't have been casualties on that day either. If there is evidence of a non-August 12th-related safety issue, I would like to see it, please. I can tell you that I have seen people tripping on the mall because of uneven bricks. The cars are far more obvious and a horrible hazard. I can tell you by closing Fourth Street, you will hurt my business and other businesses on Fourth Street. But don't just take my word for it. Survey my fellow business owners and ask them how closure will affect their businesses and sales tax receipts. Then you can make an evidence-based decision about the street closure. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Goodron Campbell.
I'm speaking about the Special Events Ordinance. I live in the Wallen Mills area. Hi, my name is Kijian Campbell. I'm twelve years old and a rising seventh grader at Beaufort. I've organized two school strikes for climate, and I'm in the process of planning another. I've also attended the CHS Black Student Union's protest for equity in the school system, and a rally to protest Dominion's plants for two unnecessary new pipelines, and a compressor station in Union Hill, which will harm the state's environment. All of these protests were intent only on helping the community, and all the people in attendance could have been criminally charged. Literally hundreds of young people could have faced criminal charges for standing against injustice. Of course, the city attorney has stated that, no, the city has not and will not charge children, establishing that this is not being enforced equally. Clearly, the ordinance is outdated and deeply flawed. However, if the proposed amendments are adopted, then what? Literally hundreds of Charlottesville residents could face civil charges. Under this ordinance now and with the amendments, the city will be nurturing an environment in which the wealthy and privileged can speak up, while those affected most by these issues are not able to. Because now, some have severe unnecessary police contact or fines they're not able to pay. This is why I'm asking you to take a closer look at the Special Events Ordinance. Thank you.
John Hall.
I introduce myself before. I'd just like to reiterate that our court system is overburdened with very high caseloads. Video eyes clearly show guilt versus innocence of defendants as well as plaintiffs. Officers are not thorough and skilled lawyers. Overcome what is clear evidence in the video eye. Contrast the justice served to the poor. No matter the color of their skin, they often are found guilty, are not heard, are not given a fair chance to present their truth, even given inadequate defense. Counsel appointed them. Those reporting to OAR are already convicted in the minds of the judges. Offender needs to be changed to defendant or defender, DAR, to rediscuss the old Landmark Hotel now. Once the city passes the old Landmark Hotel rights to the Hall campaign through eminent domain or through gentle negotiation with John Duberry, we, as one select people, will act to refurbish the concrete and steel shell. Robin Hoffman tells me that Sun Tribe Solar Power powers the Nissan Car Mall with ninety-two percent efficiency at the Ryle Hill Shopping Center in Almar County. The old landmark is intact, she says. It need not be demolished. A study has been done. Once the refurbished landmark is done for government-subsidized, low-rent, affordable housing for vets, the homeless, mentally ill, Charlottesville area transit drivers, and other first responder families with city and social services, funding, vetting, and Habitat for Humanity Direction, real estate rental tax abatement, we will put, we will point the way to solar power all merchants on the downtown mall and bring blessing to the one hundred families vetted and selected to participate in refurbishing the landmark under Habitat for Humanity of Greater Charlottesville Direction. These are the golden one hundred families. In a Beacon Hall Hotel seen flashing light as a flashing lighthouse all across our nation, give the Hall campaign on Heather Iyer Way and the Atlantic Union Bank your support, your money support. Thank you.
M.C. Blair.
Madam Mayor, city council members. Thank you for giving me time to speak. I'm a big fan of the city market and an advocate of eat fresh, eat local. I've noticed, however, that some of the prepared food vendors understandably purchase their meats from wholesale houses due to low prices. However, most of the Patreons, or patrons I've interviewed for my radio program have an expectation that the prepared food vendors use local ingredients. Having been in the prepared food vending business myself in a former lifetime, to make a profit when sourcing locally, the price of the finished product can be cost-prohibitive. This presents a challenge for small vendors, many of whom are refugees operating on a thin profit margin. My goal is to have the vendors in the spirit of real food and health source their meat and egg ingredients from fellow city market vendors. As an example, a sign which might read, quote, "We source our pork from Double H Farm, our eggs from Free Union Grass Farm," end quote. One solution could be that the city give a real dollar-for-dollar tax break between the discount house price and a special wholesale price that could be negotiated with the local farms. I would be glad to volunteer as a negotiator between the vendors and the farms. I want to thank the efforts of the Food Justice Network to bring our citizens and local farms together for a healthier and better educated community. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Cox.
Hello. I am Kevin Cox. I live at 311 Fairway Avenue, and I want to add my voice to support for keeping crossings open. For thirty-two years, I've walked through those crossings twice a day, five days a week, okay? They are some of, they are the safest pedestrian crossings in Charlottesville. It's much more dangerous to cross Market Street or Water Street to get to the downtown mall than it is to go across those crossings. I wish all drivers... I wish all drivers would behave at other intersections in Charlottesville the way they behave at those two crossings. I really don't see any need to close the crossings at all, and they are important. They provide disabled access, and they provide a way for deliveries to be made. There's lots of reasons to keep them open. In the many years that I walked, I was frequently stopped, this was pre-GPS, I was frequently stopped by lost tourists. And it wasn't at all uncommon for people to stop and ask me, "Where is the downtown mall?" And after a chat with them, I would have discovered that they had driven around the mall several times, but they hadn't crossed it. This was before the crossings. So that's an important function of the crossings. I would like to ask one question, and that is why, two years into the terrorist attack, is it possible to drive from the crossings onto the downtown mall? There are bollards on the side streets, there are bollards at both ends, there are hydraulic bollards available that can be controlled by a remote control to allow emergency access when necessary. But as it stands right now, people can and do drive onto the mall proper from those crossings. It happens all the time. Usually, they don't get very far, and the vendors stop them, or citizens stop them. I've stopped them. I have heard from some of my friends on the mall that there have been occasions where people did not stop and drove the length of the mall. Okay? And I, I think this is a terrible oversight. And I, I would like to know, is it going to be corrected?
It's the goal. It's what the safety studies were.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Tanisha Hudson?
Hey, y'all. First, I want to say, I don't have a voice, because I was turning up last night, so I'm sorry. But I want to give my cousin Brian right here some acknowledgement. Brian worked with me all day yesterday. Y'all need to get his man a raise. He worked all day. Mayor Walker, how you doing? Yo, he did a good job. We worked, he was out there, I was out there at nine, you came at 10. We left at 11, you left at 11, I left at like 11:40. We did a good job yesterday. We really did. So I want to give Brian and Charlene a shout out for contributing. It was a lot of work, but we pulled it off. I also want to add that while people are complaining about the mall crossing, I wish y'all listen to people of color and their community, in our communities, I mean, and their concerns about their community, the way that you listen to the downtown businesses. Because Mr. Gaines didn't want 10th and Page. Mr. Gaines wanted Preston and Ninth Street, where Cardinal Hall is. Y'all forgot all about that. Another thing is, P.O., I mean, not P.O. Street, Wordland Street. You need to do a traffic study on Wordland Street and take the traffic light from Wordland Street and put it on 10th and Page Street, and put a caution light on Wordland Street. Would that make more sense to do, because a lot of people don't make that right turn? So you need to move the do not turn on red off Wordland Street, move the traffic light, and put it on 10th and Page Street. Now, the downtown mall being safety, I mean, having safety issues with people crossing. I go to Miami all the time, and Lincoln Road is just like the downtown mall. And they have a pedestrian crossing light that people got to push the button to cross the street, and cars have to stop. Put a light right there and make it a pedestrian stoplight. It's really not that hard, like, for us to figure out, like, safety ways to make this thing work. Maybe I need to be the director of traffic probably. Because I think traffic been an issue here for a long, am I right? Like, traffic been an issue here for a long time. Like, our streets are tore up. You, it take 30 minutes to get from wetness to McDonald's on Ridge and McIntyre. It's 50 million stoplights. It's 9 million pedestrians, crossings, and certain neighborhoods, and you come to the Blackneck hood, and we can't, we J-Won. I mean, I don't know what better way to give it to y'all, and I'm sorry, I can't really talk. Last night, we had a good time. But y'all get what I'm saying, like, you have got to listen to us too and our neighborhoods. Like, let's work together and make every neighborhood a safe neighborhood, not just the downtown mall.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, Mary Carey?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Uh, Mary Carey, city resident. Oh, my goodness. I came up to her to talk about, uh, parents getting our children taken away from them and stuff with the Department of Social Services, but it was a lot of other stuff that came up that seemed like a need your attention. And the downtown crossings, like Mr. Bummey said, girl, they get killed down there. A lot of people got hurt down there. But my mom and family buried over in Oakwood. But that don't stop me from going down there. And I don't see why we should stop people from going down Fourth Street. Because I've been in Charlottesville longer than most of the people, and I see a lot of people out there with white hair, but that don't mean that you old. That you been in Charlottesville just as long as I have, but I was here when everything was a street. You could go any kind of way. Until they built that mall. That mall was a problem, it's still a problem. I don't go down there, I hate it. But to cross it, Fourth Street, I like it, because when I be invited to free lunches at the Nook, I get put off on that corner. And I get picked up at that corner. And I don't have to walk that far. Down on South Street, I'm trying to get the trolley to go down through, through, uh, Second Street, and the lady back there was saying about her business, I, I agree with her. I mean, I know a lot of people, I have family that come here from out of town and stuff that don't even recognize Charlottesville, and they grew up here. And, and they don't even go down the mall either, because they don't even care about the mall anymore. You're cutting off stuff that's relevant, i- it's, it's, is relevant to this community. But anyway. Now, let me say some things that y'all gonna get angry with me about, but that's okay, I'm used to it. The freedom of speech started when you three got up there. Y'all cut everything out. And then you sitting here telling people to respect y'all? When y'all came in here, Mr. Signle, you was acting like a dictator. You was telling us what you was gonna do, how you were gonna do it, and how we were going to act. And then you started off with this lottery BS, which nobody liked. Mr. Bummey talking about his friends couldn't get off early enough, come down here and sign up and stuff. Don't see no black people up in here, but the same ones that come all the time. Where is his friends that couldn't sign up? When all this rhetoric y'all called disrespect and yelling and stuff, it started with you three. We didn't have that stuff when Ms. Bummey, you know it, because you was on the, on the council when, when Hoosier was the mayor. You didn't have all these people in here current on like that, till you and Krista Seikos and a whole bunch of y'all, and Signle and all y'all was arresting people and carrying them out of here because they disrespected you, because y'all didn't give us no respect. It started with y'all, right here. So stop going around, still trying to tell people how to talk and respect you, because if you want to listen to those Senate hearings and stuff on TV, they call each other worse names than that. Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Um, Robin Hoffman?
My name is Robin Hoffman. I live on Caroline Avenue, uh, behind Jack and Jill's, in the Will and Mills area. And I'm here today, I'm sorry, I haven't been here in a while, because there's a lot of catching up to do. There's a, these meetings are great. Also are the, the debates for city council, so are different politicians' meetings. It's ideas that people are sharing, but what I would love is for everybody to sign up to CPA TV. Mary Carey's like, "Oh, but you've been saying that for two years." But guess what? This Saturday, right here in City Chambers, Calvin Tate, Louis Tate is going to be here, and he's going to sign you all up. Just put your name on every single time slot. And because there used to be, um, 100 producers, and now there's only 12. Most of them are church, which is good. Like, for me, I was in firm for three months, because my, my ankle broke, and I, I didn't watch the church, but I watched other things on stream TV. I was on TV. And everybody here has a story, so that's the idea. So Mayor Carey has a story, uh, uh, the mayor has a story, um, Brian Willer has a story, Wes has a story, Ms. Hill has a story, Mr. Richardson has a story, everybody has a story. And you can have that story in 28 minutes every week. So sign up, and then people will, it'll be famous. People will actually stream it. The young people want to stream it. I, I canvass a lot, I, 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 um, I volunteer a lot for different things, for solar, for schools, and I get petitions for people to get, I do all these things. Don't ask, it's just fun to do. But anyway, um, he- here's the thing I wanted to say is, also, I'm, I want to pass this around, I don't know if I'm allowed to, but I'm, I probably will do it anyway. This is, um, Home Energy Challenge, and I, I, I've got a whole bunch of names at the, going back to school. What it is, is if you put your name on here, and your cell number, and your email, and the location of your neighborhood, um, the person on the other side of the sheet will give you a call and ask you to do a little party. And that will enable Charlottesville to be the first city who is energy efficient in Virginia. So we, we already are doing that. Actually, they showed that at the Paramount. They had, uh, three years ago, they had 10 businesses, and then two years ago, they had like half the auditorium of Paramount, and then they had the whole auditorium of businesses. So, uh, those are the things that I came here to say today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Tomika Moten? All right, we have two slots. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? No? All right. So we're going to close the, um, Community Matters. Um, are there any comments? All right. So we'll break until 8:05? Well, we have a little bit longer. Well, we have a little bit longer.
Tomika Moten? No? All right, we have two slots. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? No? All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments?
No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay.
Tomika Moten? No? All right, we have two slots. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? No? All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments?
No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay.
Tomika Moten? No? All right, we have two slots. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? No? All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments?
No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay.
Tomika Moten? No? All right, we have two slots. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? No? All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments?
No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay.
Tomika Moten? No? All right, we have two slots. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? No? All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments?
No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay.
Tomika Moten? No? All right, we have two slots. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? No? All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments?
No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any comments? No comments. All right. So, we'll break until eight. Eight oh five? Well, we have a little bit longer. Okay. All right. So, we're gonna close the Community Matters. Are there any discussion?
I have, well, I'd rather somebody make a motion first.
What we don't have is the no vote.
First reading. Well, that's right, sorry. Well, in that case, I'll say a couple, is that good? I just wanted to address the comments that Mr. Farina made at the beginning. And they were very, he was the gentleman who spoke with his concerns about, about the neighborhood and gentrification. And I just wanted, they're very heartfelt. I was on the committee for two years before, like way, way back before even getting, even running for council. And those were exactly the concerns that we put a lot of time into trying to address with many subsequent iterations of the West Main Street Scape Plan. Was making it more inviting, cognizant of the surrounding neighborhoods, not making it be some glass and steel, you know, wealthy corridor. This was on top of a major decision that happened, which was very controversial when, when, when Wes and Kathy and I came on, which was cutting the building heights on this part of West Main Street, slashing them down to four, four stories, I think, which was, which was out of this desire to, to make West Main Street not a commercial corridor and have it actually be consistent with the surrounding neighborhoods as much as we could, given that development was going to come to it, which it, which it does. So, there's a lot of elements in the West Main Street Scape Plan that are meant to be inviting to go into the surrounding neighborhoods, have a lot of history. We're, we're, we want to talk about the Drury Brown Bridge and enhancing the history, which, which others may be wanting to speak about. And that, that is like where, and, and the major things are trying to make it the city's living room. So, a lot of the design is meant to make people want to, of everybody, want to hang out there and have it flow into the neighborhoods. It's meant to be a sitting and socializing place. And making safe bike lanes is really important. It's really dangerous now. It's been three years since we voted and moved this forward. I mean, I can't, I can't believe it. We voted in early 2016. You know, like I'm biking a lot more with kids now. And like I wish it's not a safe corridor. It's a very dangerous corridor. I've, there, there's a lot of accidents that have occurred there. And that's one of the many things we wanted to, I just wanted to address what Mr. Farina said. I think we did try to, try to address those concerns.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, now, I could just follow up on that a little bit?
If I could just follow up on that a little bit? So, and, and Councilmember Signer is, is right, we did the, we did the rezoning of West Main Street East and West Main Street West in 2015. And so we, we removed the special use permits, and we made it so east of the Drury Brown Bridge, the maximum height was four stories, down from six stories, but they could have gotten a special use permit to go up to 170 to 80 feet. No, it was actually 100 feet, it was like downtown extended zoning. And then west of the Drury Brown Bridge, the by right was six stories, and again, the same thing, it was all the same thing. There were six stories by right, could go up to 101 feet with a special use permit, and that's why you got the two buildings, the two luxury student housing projects that we see there today. So that, that rezoning is a direct response to the community's loud cry against it. And plus, there are these things called the ball, plain step downs. So even in the back, so the buildings now stepped back, you can see that with the Cork Hotel, to pay deference to, in this, in that case, the Jefferson School. So that, that also with making the pedestrian infrastructure kind of evened out and wider, when you look at the pictures and you've experienced it, the broken sidewalks because of the roots bubbling up. A large part of that is to underground the utilities. But we have since learned that Dominion Energy will not pay for the undergrounding of utilities, so the city has to cover it completely, and that's despite every year we've made requests to the General Assembly to at least make arrangements where we could go 50/50 on, on the cost. But no, we have to absorb the entire cost, and that's about a third of the whole corridor's expense, is, is putting the underground utilities in a duct bank. So, but, but increasing the tree canopy 400% also is incredibly important for the environment. It, it not only keeps us cool and cuts down cooling loads of the buildings, it starts doing this important work of decarbonization, getting the carbon out of the air, which is we've got to do all over the city. And the SolvaCell technology that the trees we planted in are going to be filtering the storm on a runoff, so that we're meeting our requirements with the Chesapeake Bay Act, i.e., meaning we're getting rid of the nutrients that go and pollute the rivers by filtering it out before it gets there. So the street's doing a lot of stuff with the improvements, and I wish Mr. Farina was here to hear that, and thank you for kicking that off. But I think it's an, it's an important corridor on the street, and the state thinks so as well, because that's why they've been giving us revenue sharing and smart scale for the last, for Phase One, and now Phase Two.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
The only thing I just want to echo was around the Drury Brown Bridge, we've been hearing a lot from the public throughout, and they, really an interest in partnering with the city to understand what enhancements can be made to the bridge itself, and obviously there was some activity over the summer with some events, and clearly a lot of interest, and they have a petition that was also distributed, so I just wanted to kind of highlight that for Dr. Richardson's awareness and for staff.
All right. Any other comments? The public hearing is closed.
I thought you asked about.
The public hearing is closed, thank you. All right.
I think it's, it's probably time to just see if there are any objections to putting on the consent.
No objections.
All right. All right, next we have a petition to close an alley off of Carlton Avenue next to 931. It's the first of two readings.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilors. Before you, you have what is the first petition to vacate a street or alley within the City of Charlottesville, based on the new street and alley closing policy adopted May the 6th of this year. The rubric that you approved stated that if a proposed, if a petition for a proposed vacation of a street or alley scored less than 1.5, then it would advance for the council's consideration tonight. And I do want to point out that based on your policy, this does not need to be referred back to the Planning Commission. The council can go forward, well, tonight will be your first of two readings for this item. I do know that the applicant is here, but Mayor Walker, if you wish, I, I would advise maybe opening the public hearing first, letting people speak, and then if the applicant needs to respond.
All right, are there any questions from Council? All right, I'll open the public hearing. We have one Reverend G. H. Goanna. Good evening.
Good evening to all. I'm, I'm here, actually on behalf of my mother, who owned the property at 931 Charlton Avenue. She passed on June 8th of this year. Regarding that, the adjacent property at 929, Mr. Mary is here, and he is the, the owner and seller of the property at 929. And there was a concern about the property and the property line. My mother agreed to, signed a statement saying that she would assume that, that line, which is part of the alley. That alley truly has been closed since 1967, when Burley ceased as a high school the last year. That alley was used for a lot of times for students coming through that alley between 931 and 929, to go to Henry Avenue, to go to Burley High School. No one has used that alley since that time. However, there's been a house that is directly behind 931 and 929. So you cannot go through that alley onto Henry Avenue, because it's, it's someone's property. And, and so my concern is, why now to close that alley, since no one is using it, and has not been used since 1967? And so my, my concern again is why, why is it necessary to close the alley when initially the land was assigned over to my mother, so that the house can be sold at 929? So again, I'm not understanding why it's necessary now to close an alley when initially it was because of the, the, the survey in the property line. So that, that's my concern.
May I ask a question, Mayor Walker?
So Reverend Goanna, nice to see you, and I'm very sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
So you're asking us to not close the alley?
Right. Yes, not close alley, I mean, because it's not been used at any time since, actually since 1967.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any, is anyone that would like to speak for the public hearing?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Matt Murray. I'm the sole owner of RT2 LLC, the entity that owns 929 Charlton Avenue. To answer Reverend Goanna's question, the reason to close the alley is that the house, 929 Charlton Avenue, encroaches into the alley five and a half feet to four and a half feet, from front to back, and therefore is a defect on the title to the property. I have contracted to sell the house to a nice young family back in, six months ago, and am unable to sell it, because the buyer cannot get a bank loan with the title defect. So this house, it's hard to say, Reverend Goanna once told me that the house was built in 1920, before the city acquired the alley by dedication. There has been an error made by somebody, either the builder built into the alley, or the city failed to, back in the 20s, failed to discern where the alley was in relation to the house. But there is now a house in Charlottesville that cannot be sold unless the city abandons the alley. It's my only recourse to be able to turn this property over.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, I have a question for Mr. Blair. Mr. Blair, is there no other way to remedy this situation, besides closing the alley?
Well, I, sort of, I, I think what Mr. Murray is saying is that ultimately, the city has this interest in the alley. And the, the structure that has been built encroaches in that alley. And so legally, the city at any time could use its right to, in effect, to the reverend's point, reopen the alley. However, if the city maintains that interest in the alley, what typically happens is, when a title search is performed on a residential lot, you have to get title insurance in order for most, for a bank to give you a commercial loan, or, or, I'm sorry, well, a real estate loan, or mortgage for the house. So if you can't get clear title, and I, I certainly have not talked to the title company, as that's a private matter, but if a title company will not give you title insurance, then a bank will not provide you a mortgage, because the fear being that the bank is giving you a mortgage on that property, and obviously, the bank, if they have a loan on the property, their security is the structure. But if there is an alley, a right to an alley that runs through it, then the title insurance company won't give the title insurance, because there's always the fear that the city could reassert its rights to use the alley. And then the bank, since its security is the house, if an alley ran through the house and there wasn't an eminent domain proceeding, then part of the structure would be destroyed, and their security interest would therefore be lowered, the value of the security interest, which might be less than the mortgage.
So the, the property was built, part of it is in the alley, how much is remaining that's closer to the 931 property?
Mr. Murray, I, I'd ask Mr. Murray, who?
There is a, there should be a flat, you know, material.
There is.
It shows the encroachment. I have a copy up here, let me hand it up.
We found it, thank you. So in a matter like this, would discussing the issues with the title company, even though it's a private matter, since this is the requ, this is the request, be an option? And if not, would the amount of land that is closer to the 931 property, could it be the cutoff be split between the two properties?
Maybe vacate a portion of the alley? I'd, I'd like to ask Mr. Murray if he would be amenable.
The city has a 10-foot wide easement.
Right.
And if the city were to abandon the five feet on my side, that's fine with it.
Okay.
But, but then you have a five-foot wide easement, you also have a sewer line that runs under.
Right.
And you need, I understand you need a 20-foot wide easement for that. That's creative thinking. I never considered that, if you just abandoned my app, then that's fine with me, but if, if the whole thing's abandoned, half of it reverts to Mr. Goanna's interest, so it might be in his interest to acquire that app.
So since it's unused, I mean, considering either one of those options, and I guess we would need to know, there was something, let me see, the sewer line, there was a...
Right. There is a sewer line easement there. And if the council does grant the vacation of the alley, we would still ask, as part of the vacation, that the property owner grant the easement for the use of the sewer line.
So then if we did the, where we vacated to both property owners, would that?
Well, that's a good question.
That be submitted to both of them?
In effect, and, and I can double check before the next meeting, in effect, if you vacated the entire alley, what would occur is half should go to one property owner and half to the other, if it follows the usual street vacation principles. And that, I don't know if, if the parties, I mean, it would be great if, if they'd come up and, and address that if they wish, to talk about, would they feel, again, with the vacation...
Would that would resolve the concerns, if you would...
These are adjacent property owners, so back to back.
Thank you for the dialogue. I don't have a problem with that, however, I'm just administrator of that property now. And so I don't, I don't know what my rights are regarding that property, other than being the caretaker administrator of that property, since she's passed. So, you know, I don't know if I can sign anything, you know, regarding that particular property and the land to, to, that's, that joins his property.
So it's, the property is an estate?
Yes, it is.
Right. And, and concerning that, I, I know you, you've mentioned there's a boundary line issue with, with the two properties. This in and of itself doesn't affect the boundary line itself, it just vacates the city's portion, the city's alley. Property owner's still, and is administrator of the estate, and ultimately whoever would inherit the property, that, if there's still a boundary line dispute, that's, again, sort of a private legal matter between the two property owners. But if an alley or a street is vacated, the principle is that property owners on both sides of the street, if we're talking like this, flattened piece of land, it goes halfway. And both property owners, then, once the street is vacated, it would be split in half the property itself that underlies the alley or street. And so that's what, in effect, if the city council at its next meeting vacated this street, that alley disappears. The city no longer has any interest between those two parcels. It should be that then, half of that particular piece of the alley reverts to your property, and half would revert to Mr. Murray's property.
And that, it needs to be surveyed, so we know the exact markings for whose property and the property line, because without that information, then you still have a problem. So that information needs to be, be clarified.
Well, I'm not, again, I'm not aware of the private dispute over where the line is.
Right, I understand that, but I'm just simply saying that if, if you say that that alley now will become private between 929 and 931, it still needs to have a marking, so that you know where the property line ends.
Oh, the new property. That would be established, right, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's my concern.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that, that would be established.
I still need the easement, to be able to get in there into the sewer line, if I need to do some work.
Certainly, and that's, this is all conditioned upon, this vacation is conditioned upon the easement for the sewer line.
Okay. So that sounds like we'll be in agreement, is council okay with that direction?
I think there's clarity now.
All right, good, great. Are there any, so it just will move to the consent?
Consent.
Okay, thank you. So next we have a resolution, critical slope waiver, 915 Sixth Street Southeast, first of one reading. Good evening.
Good evening. Carrie Rainey with Neighborhood Development Services. Rainix LLC is requesting a waiver from Section 341120B, the critical slope waiver section, to allow for construction of a mixed-use development that would include two buildings with 28 one- and two-bedroom multifamily residential units in commercial use, along with surface parking lot, which would include vegetated canopies at 915 Sixth Street. This property has frontage on both Sixth Street Southeast and Second Street Southeast. The Planning Commission discussed the critical slope waiver request at their May 14th meeting this year. The following information is relevant to this request. Much of the site is wooded, there is currently a single-family home located on the property, there are no major rock outcroppings. Approximately 36% of the critical slop, excuse me, property, approximately 36% of the critical slopes are in excess of greater than 60%, and approximately 30% of those would be disturbed with this critical slope waiver. The waterway in question is the Pollux Branch daylighted portion, which is within 200 feet of the property. The applicant has proposed two buildings, one of which is almost entirely in the critical slopes area of the property. This property, excuse me, this development could potentially be accommodated outside of the critical slope area, however, the height and other aspects of the design may be different. The Planning Commission discussed the following items at their meeting. The sensitivity and potential degraded health of Pollux Branch, the height of the proposed retaining walls and related existing tree removal located in the critical slope area, the possibility of clustering the development outside of the critical slope area closer to Sixth Street Southeast, possibly through taller buildings to maintain similar uses, the possibility of exploring an off-site cooperative parking arrangement with other properties in the area, to reduce the provided, the required parking provided on site. The Planning Commission took the following action. Mr. Alejandro moved to recommend denial of this application for the critical slope waiver. Ms. Green seconded the motion. The commission voted three to two to recommend denial of the application, with Mr. Mitchell abstaining. Justin Shimp with Shimp Engineering is here on behalf of the applicant as well to have, and has a presentation, if you so choose, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Would you all like to see the presentation?
I do have a question, Mayor Walker, because it, I, in reading the staff report, it does, there's a statement, however, a development of similar use in residential density could potentially be accommodated outside of critical, critical slope areas with a different site design. So that's kind of the bottom line that the Planning Commission had come up with.
Correct.
Okay.
Does, Council, do you, any of you need any further information? Does council, do you, any of you need any further information? Okay. All right. Is there a motion?
Mayor Walker, I move to deny the critical slope waiver as recommended by the planning commission.
I'll second.
All right. Please vote. All right. That carries four to one. Well, the vote, it's been taken. So Dr. Bellamy, I asked if there was any counselor who needed more information. I've reviewed the planning commission. I've had the information that I needed. Okay. All right. Next we have a report and recommendation from the city managers of Azurion Organizational Equity.
Thank you, Mayor Walker, Mayor of City Council. I know Mr. Murphy and Kaki have been working on this for a period of time, and they're going to be here tonight to give the presentation pertaining to their findings.
He has. No screen.
You want me to, we can put something up there if it's gonna make you happy.
Dancing across the screen.
I want you to be happy, yeah. All right. Members of council. So, as you know, we made a presentation to you at the first meeting in May about the efforts of the group that I am panelled last year to work on this important issue. And I want to start again today with my thanks to that group for their efforts on behalf of the city. We had a tremendous group of folks, and I want to thank Kaki and Charlene in particular for the work that they did with those folks. As you'll recall, the history of this, you know, comes from, you know, a lot of discussion with the council and concerns that I had in my role about the number of community indicators, about disparities and disproportionality and a lack of equity in the community. But not a focus over time on the city's role in addressing equity. And so really, before we can continue to pour money into many different initiatives, all serving important purposes, we have to look at what our role is in the city. And so what did the group do? As you'll recall, they looked at other communities who are doing this work on diversity, equity, and inclusion. They gave self-evaluations to each of the departments, and we did some salary study. And a lot of that is in your report today. Much of it is a repeat of the work that we gave you in May. We're back tonight with recommendations, but short of, you know, recommendations with a budget behind them because we do need questions and direction from council. You know, I guess the question for council is why, you know, Kaki will go through the recommendations, but why, why do you need this, some of this stuff to happen in the recommendations? Why do we need the office and various staff? And so I want to address a couple of things. You know, the principles of diversity have been talked about in the city for a long time. I know that we've talked about them specific to some departments and as an organizational goal. But diversity, just sheer numbers, you know, which already mirror the population, with the absence of equity and inclusion of those people is meaningless. And so we really need to focus on all of these items. So, you know, diversity is not really a choice for the city of Charlottesville or any other organization. You know, we're going to be a majority-minority country within the next twenty to twenty-five years. And actually, the generation which Dr. Bellamy believes himself to be a part of, but maybe is just after him, is actually, you know, a majority.
Per our initial opening comments, no direct disrespect would be tolerated. Not be tolerated, bailiff.
If Officer Curtis is still in my office, he can forgive me.
Mayor Walker, I just want that to be noted.
It's an ad hominem attack.
I couldn't, it was buzzing in my ear. I didn't hear.
Just trying to help set where we're talking about.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. So, you know, there's a number of different grounds that we might talk about the importance of such an initiative, and many of them have been expressed on kind of the, the social importance or the moral importance, ethical importance of having an equity or an inclusion focus. There are other reasons, and those are all compelling to me, but we've spent a lot of time on those in the past. I, I think there is ample evidence based on our work and what we know out in the world that there is an economic case to be made. We know that diverse teams and those that feel more inclusive have better efficiencies. They form better teams. There's less disruption. And, you know, for organizations sometimes who have employee disputes, there is less, less disputes and perhaps less lawsuits, less cost.
I agree with everything you just said.
Well, let me, let me keep going then, Mayor. There might be more. You know, there is the market case also to be made. I think, we've talked a little bit about this the past, if we want to look at how we will best serve the city and the citizens, our residents, we have to have people who reflect our customers and their values and understand them. There is also the matter of results and outputs. It is certainly researched and studied that diverse teams are more productive, more creative, better tuned in to customers. So I'm going to ask Kaki to talk a little bit about the specific recommendations. I will anticipate that one question is, well, you've got these, these recommendations about new positions, but, you know, isn't that something that, you know, some people do in HR? Or couldn't we do that in human rights? Or, you know, don't they want an outreach person in the civilian review board? So I would offer you that this is something entirely different from that. And I can give you my case about why each of those things is not this thing, but I ask you to listen to Ms. Demick, and we'll certainly answer all the questions that council has after.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
In the report, much of the data, as Mr. Murphy has indicated, is data that we submitted to you all without additional conclusions that the committee had drawn or recommendations. And so tonight really is about walking through the recommendations that the committee spent a considerable amount of time on. There are two broad recommendations. The first is to prepare city staff and the organization, the organizational context for culture change. The second is to create an office of diversity, equity, and inclusion. The conclusion that this group had after doing its analysis, both of the internal data and external sort of steps that have been taken by other communities, is that we had considerable work to do internally before we could benefit from having an office of champions for this issue, that we really needed to prepare this context. And we spent a fair amount of time talking about whether there had to be one before the other or whether they could be simultaneous. And, and there was agreement in the end that we could do both concurrently, but that we had to do both in order to benefit from having any kind of office of diversity, equity, and inclusion. One of the, the primary recommendations around preparing the context is to create an internal and external combo team to shepherd the equity work. And so they would be an advisory team, of which there would also be a subcommittee called a Human Resources Council that would be entirely internal. So each one of those members of that team would both be staff and directors from each one of the departments, who, whose job would be to sort of make sure that there are champions throughout the organization and multiple sort of kinds of positions with kinds of power, but also informal influence as well to participate in this conversation. We talked about having education, lots of formal educational opportunities, but also a lot of informal educational opportunities where this conversation on the need for equity and inclusion was happening at all levels of the organization, both formally and informally, in order to prepare us for making the kind of culture change that would be most receptive to the work of an office of diversity, equity, and inclusion. In addition, we had talked about having a work session. There actually a lot has been done by the city around the issue of equity and having a work session where we talk about all of those things, not in-depth about each one of them, but look at the array of attempts and efforts that have already been made, and then talk about where the gaps are so that this council and senior leaders can agree on where the sort of holes might be or where the next opportunity is for influencing equity in the community. We also talked about the need for developing intentional strategic goals around the issue of race and equity as part of the city's overall strategic plan, but also the departmental goals. And so that's particularly hard to do, but it is also, in order to get to a meaningful goal, reflects some authentic engagement around the question about how your interest or commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion actually influences your behavior in your department, the kinds of services you deliver or the way you deliver them. So our interest is not just in having conversations, but actually having those conversations influence the way we deliver the services to the community. And so having some very intentional strategic goals by department, but also the city as a whole around that issue. We also felt like it was important to join GARE. I believe that Councilmember Bellamy brought this up before about the need to join. I think we made an attempt to join last year, but we hadn't done enough sufficient work around this issue to actually be warranted a worthy member. And so hopefully, after this work tonight, we'll be in a better position to make the case that they should include us.
We got a good sidetrack this time.
Okay, good. We'll do some name dropping. And I do think that they will be really instrumental in providing us with good resources about how to move this conversation around, and also access to other communities that are in the midst of this sort of developmental process. I think it's really important to be able to learn from other communities as they're moving forward. And finally, around this issue, we talked about the need for selecting a human resources director that had some experience in this area around diversity, equity, and inclusion. And then, as you all have heard, we are recommending the creation of an office of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Couple important aspects of this, we really would like this, the, to be staffed to ensure capacity so that we're not talking about a symbolic figurehead. We're really talking about an organization and a department that can get things done, that has the skills and capacity to move this conversation and champion this conversation internally. We would like that, the director to report to the city manager's office, to have a full-time data analyst. We've really talked about the value of collecting data, not just to understand where we were, but also to begin to map out our potential impact internally and also in terms of our service impact. And then a community engagement coordinator. We also felt like it was important to identify that we would like this office to be authorized to influence policy and practice and authorized to implement goals of equity advisory team, the Human Resources Council, and the city manager's office. Often we have positions that are sort of special project positions in, in city government, and they have influencing power, but not direct authority and power. We're really talking about this position, being able to influence other directors to move the needle inside their own departments. Any questions specific to the recommendation?
I'd just like to commend both of you, Ms. Demick as well as Mr. Murphy, on the hard work that you all have been putting into the equity initiative as a whole.
And the committee members who are here.
Well, I was going to get to them. No interrupting. Rule number two. Rule B, section six dash seven.
Well, I'm sorry, younger people are more sensitive.
That's two attacks. Two attacks in one night.
Sorry.
And the committee, to be clear, thank you all for your hard work. But in all seriousness, I know Ms. Galvin, and I, all of us really been talking about this. And there was, I just had one question. Ms. Ms. Galvin, I remember mentioning a year or two years ago, even when we were going through a lot of the minority business stuff, we were talking about maybe an equity office. Is this something that we could see is kind of potentially building into? I know we're talking about departments, but I mean like a, a full-fledged office specifically better than what the county has.
Yeah.
Yes, I think where we're saying is...
No, I want to hear, I want to hear, just like, can you let me get, hear what I want to hear.
We really feel like it's important to have this conversation be focused internally on the internal culture and the internal context first. But then we do imagine that's part of the reason why we would be interested in having a, a work session on equity is to sort of try to combine all of the individual efforts around this issue and link them together. And it makes good sense to have this office eventually have external obligations and engagement around the issues of equity for our community as well.
Yeah, they got it. That's going to get tweeted out. I just want to make sure that it was clear in their layman's terms.
All right, so.
I have a question, if I may. So thank you for this excellent work, both of you. I really, we all appreciate this, but I just want to get it clear in my head. So under creating the office of diversity, equity, and inclusion, item two D, you say facilitate selection and implementation of equity impact assessment tool for council and senior leadership decision-making. We've talked in many situations about an equity impact assessment for our development and planning decisions. Would that apply as well? So it's a cross-departmental, looking at all the focus areas of every department, but applying an equity assessment tool?
Yes, so it would be an equity impact assessment tool, much like an environmental impact assessment tool, where any new idea, new investment, new project, new sort of appropriation would require at least the director or the staff person preparing the memo to have done to answer some certain questions. And there are some tools, impact assessment tools, that are like three months of process and thirty-four pages long. And then there are others that have two or three questions, like who's most impacted by this decision, both benefits and not, in terms of what the decision is or the neighborhood that it'll be based in. And, and we didn't, we looked at a bunch of those tools, but wouldn't really feel like we could say which tool was appropriate, and then we really wanted this office to do some assessment. There's some, or some analysis around which tool would be most effective for us. There's some early data. A lot of this stuff is really untested, right? And this is sort of a new world in terms of the way we, we act and talk and respond. And so there are not a lot of sort of outcome data related to a lot of these things, good process data, but not outcome data. And there are some early results from those communities that have adopted these impact tools that they really haven't had the kind of impact on decision-making that they hoped they would. So I think it's worthy of some additional consideration that we didn't just pick a tool that we liked, but that we actually authorized this office to do some more formal analysis. But it would be one of the most important tools, I think, to be, to, as part of this office, to pick a tool that would be influential in council decision-making and senior leadership decision-making.
And just a, a follow-up to bore down a little bit more on this particular topic, in light of the fact that we had a conversation last Thursday at a work session about development and growth and impacts, and I believe it was Mr. Payne that, that actually voiced something that a lot of us have been talking about. Is there, would there be, through this kind of a impact assessment tool, be an ability to get a better handle on the impact of development in general on our land values that then ultimately turns into an equity issue because people can't afford to still live on their properties anymore because they can't afford the property taxes or the rents? So that's, and that's just a kind of the level of detail I'm, I'm really interested in and see if we could get that level of assistance, or perhaps even in a case where there is an office, but they may need an economist to come in. You can at least subcontract out.
And I would think this, there would be similar nuances around decision-making and social services or human services or public works around those kinds of things that we would ask this office, if they were unprepared to be able to respond to the needs for council for additional information around that, that they could go out and secure that for us. Absolutely.
This is really very nice.
But it would also require the directors and the, to start doing this kind of analysis with their work instead of just making the presentation. So however that happened, and, you know, but it would start that process that this is now a necessary part of the work we do.
And there'd be no, I mean, there'd be no, nothing stopping council from asking an additional question as an incremental process before we got to some established and impact assessment tool to say, we'd like you to answer the following questions as part of the preparation. Who's most impacted both positively and negatively by this question? That would already get to some additional information in front of you all for making decisions before we even launched any of the rest of this.
All right. All right. So I'm assuming that establishing this advisory team is, tonight is too soon. But hey, when could we get this going? Next steps.
Well, certainly, staff would be very interested in hearing which parts of these, or all parts of these recommendations you'd like to adopt, and then we can come forward with some recommendations about both process and some estimates about cost.
Okay.
But I feel Mr. Murphy wants to weigh in.
Oh, because tonight is too soon?
She already knows it's too soon. It's okay. Keep going.
All right. So you all want to come back to us and give us some recommendations about...
Cost.
Cost.
That's right. Yes.
But this... Well, I mean, we could try. Any, you said anything is possible.
On another night.
We have some estimates. I don't think that, I mean, we didn't advertise it this way, wasn't prepared that way. We want to take some more time. You know, obviously the human part of it and personnel costs money, and actually that's the easier part to talk about. I think that making a change like this, a culture change, there's some significant investment in training and kind of that repetition that will cost money too. So want to give you a reasonable estimate about what that would be so that you could say, how do you get started with that and whether that's affordable or not at this time? I mean, I know that Dr. Bellamy just likes to say half a million all the time, and you know, I know that we have the capacity to spend about half a million dollars roughly 400 times in this city, and this would be a good place to do that in my estimation.
Great place.
But we should give you a fine-tuned number.
By the third of September or you need longer?
Third of September.
I'm just asking.
Because we need more time than that. Yeah. And we'll come back and we'll let you know exactly our timetable in terms of providing you with that information. Because we have to do our due diligence in terms of the things that they mentioned within the report to be able to provide you with a reasonable number.
We're probably first October meeting.
I have a serious question for GARE. When will we be submitting our application? Do we know?
Can do it this week. Based on the fact that we're, you all, it sounds like, so it sounds like you all are adopting these recommendations and that based on that, that demonstrates a commitment to moving this work forward, and I think then that makes us a legitimate candidate. So I would apply likely this week.
Okay. Just for my colleagues who aren't familiar with GARE, it's a phenomenal resource and tool for us, there's cities across the country. We're actually talking about Charlottesville in their GARE presentation, so I think this is a huge step for us. So thank you all so much.
And I'm not touchy-feely, but I'm sending you all hugs. I just want you to know.
Really? What a night.
Yes. That is happening.
Full moon outside.
And I would just say, excuse me, if I could just say something, just for the public's understanding, GARE is the Government Alliance for Racial Equity.
Yes, it is.
And the only other thing I'll say is that, and I know Dr. Richardson, you're thinking about very big other kind of issues with regards to professional development too. Customer service is a strong suit. This goes hand and glove with equity issues because it has to be sensitive to our community. But I just would like to say that, just think as broadly as you want about what are the staff development needs that you foresee, because I know in the, in the public schools, they would, you could waste a lot of staff time if you're doing training hither and yon, as opposed to thinking about how could you consolidate and really create robust training opportunities that kind of play off each other. So I just wanted to just throw that out, that I, I'm sympathetic to your position as well of needing to look bigger in terms of cultural change in the bureaucracy.
Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That makes me happy.
Clearly, all good.
Any other business?
Yes, before we move any further, I'd like Mr. Wheeler to make a correction to one of the comments that was made tonight and pertaining to a particular date for an event that's forthcoming.
Thank you. Ms. Hoffman, who spoke to you about public access TV producers, just wanted to let you know, we do have some exciting news coming up soon about the Charlottesville Community Media Center, and that's the new studio that we opened in your place.
Yes.
I hope you'll walk through and take a look at that through the windows. But the public open house is going to be September 21st, which is also Saturday. The event this Saturday relates to our Sunday faith community producers, so it's a lottery for them to get their slots for Sunday programming. So that's a different event, and sorry if those two things were conflated, but the public open house will be September 21st at a time to be determined. We'll keep you posted on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a short thing I'd like to say. With regard to the young ladies' comment to us about the public gathering procedures and the permits that we heard, I have asked our counsel, our attorney, Mr. Blair, and Mr. Wheeler, maybe Mr. Richardson, some combination, there is a lot of misinformation out there about this. The, there are actually two different, there are two different, the rules are in two different places. There is one place called the standard operating procedure, which is where the definitions of the terms are. And then there's another one, which is the ordinance that we've been discussing. And I don't know how that happened, when this all happened, but the standard operating procedure, and we're going to make this clear, says that any gathering that's called in reaction to a newsworthy event, like the rallies that have happened, is absolutely permitted. So the regulations are meant to have all these new requirements for planned events, like for instance, one of the big things that happened with them was you can no longer use tiki torches for a planned event to terrorize people, and that was really tricky to figure out, how do you do that? And how do you craft a regulation so that people could do candles, you know, for a vigil, but they couldn't do tiki torches? So there was a lot of law and help that we had in crafting these regulations, but there was a whole carve-out of them so that people could do exactly what you're talking about. So, and we need to get that truth out there. We need, and so we've talked about getting, because Indivisible has a whole protest right now, and there's a, and it says, these rallies would all be not permitted, which is not the case. It's just not the case, because all of them have been called in response to newsworthy events that are fairly spontaneous, that happen within 48 hours. So as I understand it, we need to get that out there because it's very confusing to have the two different regulations alongside each other and referring to one another, because people don't know how to get to the standard operating procedure, which defines a spontaneous event which is unregulated. So spontaneous events that are in response to newsworthy events are unregulated, basically. I may be mischaracterizing in some way, other than if they close down the street, right?
I was about to say, if they close down the street, that's a different story, and it has to be within 48 hours of the newsworthy.
Right. So I just, we need to get this out, and I've actually wondered whether we should have a statement of some sort or provide, but we have been getting a lot of emails about this, and it should be clearer to people what the actual rules are.
And we are revisiting even the last version that we discussed, because we did not take action on it.
Yes, right.
In response to trying to, you know, receiving the feedback that we've gotten and trying to ensure that we can find a more common ground place. And as Mayor Walker said, it might be impossible to find, you know, that perfect place, but I think that there's certainly an effort underway to find as close to common ground place as we can.
Right.
But really appreciate you coming in and sharing your thoughts.
Yes.
And for all of your efforts.
Maybe you'll be up here someday.
All right. So any other business? All right, Matters by the Public, we're opening the second session. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
Mayor Walker.
Ms. Thomas.
I've been psychoanalyzing you. And what I mean by that, I know why you're so upset. I looked at the internet as to what got you to run for city council in 2017. I saw how angry you were. I kind of reviewed that, and sometimes I feel that you kind of discriminate against the white man. You kind of want to include the black mankind.
Excuse me, I think this is an example where someone is personally addressing one of our counselors.
That's fine.
I think it's wrong to say that you can have unity and togetherness and the right kind of spirit of equity if you only consider uplifting the black man or the black woman. I think what you need to do is uplift all people, black and white. There's been too much discrimination, discrimination against me, discrimination against other white colored people, and I think you need to consider that. I know you've been hurt. I think you have clearly reflected the hurt of the black person, especially in the past, and I think that was purposeful. But if we're going to get on and include everyone, black and white, red, whatever color, we need to include all and move forward in peace and happiness and include everyone, inclusive.
Thank you. Gathered a lot from the internet. I'll have to Google myself, see where you got it from. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? No?
No.
Good evening, Mayor Walker, councilors, staff, community. My name is Shawn. And timing is everything, isn't it? I'm following someone. I came this evening because I was watching at home, Mayor Walker, and I was here August 5th, I believe it was, for the last city council meeting. Went home and watched from there, and I was unsettled by what occurred in the chamber. And I kept saying, this can't be the pot of gold at the end of the rainbow that our people have sacrificed for, that the way this space is being inhabited surely can't be what so many sacrifice for, some giving the ultimate sacrifice. My comments tonight are directed to the two black members of city council because of the uniqueness of the space you have. You are firsts for us. And being first transcends Facebook posts, it transcends hashtags, it transcends bullet points on a webpage. It carries with it, and I know both of you know, responsibility, tremendous responsibility, because you're not just representing the current space and time, you're representing all those who couldn't do what you're doing, who couldn't even do what I'm doing, which is standing before elected officials to speak. My grandfather wouldn't have been given this opportunity in the way I'm being given You didn't inherit a clean slate, Mayor Walker. Certainly you didn't. But I hope in your toolkit, along with your gavel, you did inherit an eraser, and if you didn't, you could do it old school like kids used to do and use your hand to wipe it clean. I don't know, you've expressed some of what's you're wrestling with, and I can feel you wrestling with it, because you want to be equitable. You want to give our people a voice because of, we haven't had it. And you're caught between a rock and a hard place, right? Having people escorted out, reaffirming so much of the injustice that's been perpetrated against us by police, and yet you want people to have a fair say. What I don't understand about that though, and about the people who come, is when, and maybe the narrative has changed, I hear a lot of people talking about the new narrative. It confuses me. I guess Simon and Schuster would struggle to keep up with the new narratives. I know my time is drawing out. When did the new narrative, when did, when did being profane and undignified and uncouth become black? When did that become our narrative? I know it was said about us from 1619 on, I guess, but when did that become who we are? When did we embrace that and become the embodiment of that? That's not who we are. I rebuke that.
Thank you.
And I implore you to be more just in this space. Find your voice.
And we've had this discussion.
I know.
Before.
But you're still doing the same thing. And teachers will start school on Wednesday, and if they don't maintain the rules in their classrooms, they have nothing.
But the statement you just made, and we had this back and forth again the last time, so I'm not going to do it here, but you said, when did that become black?
Yeah.
There are white members of this community who come in with the same...
And they should be shut down if they are using obscenity.
But I understand, but with the same, making the same type of comments or statements.
I understand that, but you're not even enforcing the obscenity part of it. People are coming, dropping their F.
So again, what I said, and I still stick by that, and we had a conversation a few months back, was that if I call the officers up to escort someone from here, if I thought it would be as simple, that they're going to walk out that door and then go out the building and go home, then that would be an easy decision to make.
You got to try it, though. You got to try it.
But it has been tried.
That's just like a teacher that doesn't want to put somebody in the classroom to the principal's...
But have you reviewed the meetings before?
I sure have, and I was screaming with Mr. Signa, put her out, put him out. Absolutely. We must forever conduct our struggle on the highest plane of dignity.
But individuals were arrested and charged, and for me, trying to find your voice, figure out what your space in this world looks like, and how you figure out whether you have any authority, does not for me, what we have to deal with equate to sending someone home or becoming a part of the criminal justice system.
You cannot allow people to be vulgar and profane, because that's what was said about us. And when you do that, you betray who we are.
But you're talking, you're not, you are making a general statement about...
I'm basing upon what I see at home, Mayor.
I understand that, but you're talking about...
And what you're allowing people to do.
This paper just said, we, we have almost 9,000 members of the black community in Charlottesville, which is far...
And I fall thin for not coming down here.
Which is far away from the 50% of more that we used to have.
Without question.
But to make a generalized statement like you did about a few people...
The people who are coming down here, the people who are coming are allowed to speak for the whole, and they should not.
Well, I disagree.
They are allowed to speak for the whole.
And I disagree.
And that's been the narrative about black folk, and that's continuing. And that's the mockery.
And your statement just helped it along.
I disagree.
Okay.
And I invite those who are sitting at home right now, come down here and make your voices heard.
Thank you.
Because I'm the one person.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right. Well, we're closing Matters by the Public meeting adjourned.